This is a special meeting of the Board of Education. Since our secretary cannot be with us tonight, I will take attendance. Joe, you're here? John?
I'm here.
Jim, I saw. Alex? Justin? Jennifer? Mike's not here, and Julie is here. Pete? And Mary? Okay. Two, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. We have 10. At this point, I'd like to recognize the Superintendent of Schools, who will present the budget. Actually, the Superintendent of Schools and the Director of Finance will present the budget.
All right. Well, good evening, and I thank you all for coming out tonight. I know we start a little bit earlier, so thank you for arranging your schedules. I appreciate the time of our board members, our town select women and selectmen, our news reporters, community members, and our administrators who came out tonight. My name is Megan Bennett, and I am proud to be the Superintendent of Region 12 Schools. And I'm here tonight with our Director of Finance, Nicole Grant, to share the Superintendent's 2020-2021 budget. That is a mouthful, and I will refrain from saying that often. I am beginning the presentation with the big reveal at the start. We are asking our educators to provide learning targets to our students in order to focus our lessons each day. So, tonight, I'm going to practice what I preach, and I'd like the audience to focus on the big picture as we drill down to the details within the budget. So, tonight, I stand before you requesting $22,980,890 to operate our school system for the 2020-2021 school year. This is a 0.76% increase over last year's budget. Oh, it doesn't want to go. Hold on one moment. So, let's talk about our current school year. The 2019-2020 school year has been a wonderful year for Region 12 schools. We've had new programs and exciting changes that have occurred. And I have to tell you that no bird can soar in the calm. However, the winds of change do not alter our foundation. During our times of change, we continue to be grounded in our vision and mission. We must honor our traditions as we look forward to the future, and our vision helps guide us through these times of transition. So, I want to make certain that we draw attention to this slide because this starts to tell us how the budget is broken down. Each town's portion of the budget responsibility is based on the October 1 enrollment data that we send to our states. This slide represents the breakdown of our students. The Region 12 enrollment for each town is the base in which we calculate the percentage each town is responsible for. Therefore, the denominator in all of this is 596. That's how many students we have from Bridgewater, Roxbury, and Washington. What we do is we take, when we're handing Bridgewater their percentage, we take Bridgewater as our numerator and 596 as our denominator. And this lets us know the percentage that each town's budget is responsible for. I note that because you will notice that 109 of our 705 students are from towns other than Bridgewater, Roxbury, and Washington. These students are not part of our percentage calculation. These students generate revenues to our towns, and what we do is we credit each town's bill each month based on our tuition in numbers. So, here are some of the highlights from this past school year. And I hope that you look out into our audience to see the people who have made these highlights happen. We are most proud of our academic achievements as well as expanding our educational reach beyond our three towns. Our towns are hidden gems, and we want to make certain that they shine. These achievements were made given the resources that were provided by our towns this current year. And I'd especially like to draw your attention again to some of the academic achievement, knowing that all three of our elementary schools received the state's School of Distinction recognition. We have improved all standardized testing measures. And it is one to be recognized that because of our traditions and who we are, we are also recognized as the number-one school in Litchfield County. So, it is also important that we are responsible stewards to the taxpayers' dollars. We hold ourselves responsible to the promises that we've made. And transparency allows you to hold us accountable. I want to make certain that we have continuous budget conversations each year so you can see how our budget ebbs and flows. This list that we are providing showcases a project on the budget request for our 2019-2020 school year. You will see some of them have been completed. You will see some of them are in progress. And you will see some of them are scheduled for the spring. All of these were in our program improvements last year. So, where do we go from here? We continue to improve. We must move from developing curriculum to assessment development. Our assessments must reflect what we value. As our curriculum director, Teresa DeBrito, shares, we measure what matters. Our assessing will determine if the curriculum is both viable and reliable. Additionally, we are preparing to transition the Booth Free School to a multi-age model. This transition needs to be supported by resources and training so the educators are able to generate the successful multi-age model. Agroscience continues to draw students from our six sending towns. I have to tell you, the biggest surprise from this program is the number of students here in Chippewa who are interested in agricultural education. The traditions of Chippewa are what keep them grounded here. They did not want to travel to Nanawak. They wanted to be that proud part of Chippewa's tradition, and we have enhanced that by offering that agroscience program here in our hallways. The Tuition In program continues to offer our open seats to families who are willing to pay our tuition costs. These seats are only offered based on the availability of the resources. So, we never offer more than we already have before us. We are also training our staff so we are building our capacities for internal supports rather than always seeking to go externally with consultants and outside companies. I want to draw your attention at this time to that last bullet point. We will be seeking a repair referendum for our roofs at Chippewa and Burnham. This is not in our budget for this year. This is a separate referendum that we are looking to bring before our communities. I will get into more details and spell out exactly what that means in future slides. So, our program enhancements for 2021 are not as expansive as our prior years. We have transitions occurring within our schools, and therefore, I am looking to stabilize why we enhance the education in Region 12. I would like to expand our LEGO Robotics program to all of our elementary schools. Currently, this program was being piloted at Booth Free School. This is an opportunity for our students to really understand programming. It takes highly motivational equipment while building programming aptitude for our students at a younger age. The LEGO Robotics will build stronger foundations for both our robotics team and our computer science programming for years to come. As noted in the previous slide, this year, we incorporated the Eureka program for our third, fourth, and fifth graders while piloting for our kindergarten first and second grade students. We have decided to have a kindergarten through algebra program adoption. This will reduce the number of transitions between math programs as we strengthen our curriculum. Additionally, you're going to see the funny little name of a Breakfast Club up there for academic support. The Breakfast Club is a model for our elementary students to receive some additional academic supports outside of the school day. Our goal is to model this program off of our easy and smart academies that happen at Chippewa to make certain that we're closing gaps earlier in their students' academic careers. Additionally, we would like to place a building substitute at each of our elementary schools that would run from October till May. A regular building substitute would allow for more continuity at our elementary level. We know we have a high rate of absenteeism at times, and to know that we can support our students with a familiar face brings comfort to our children as well as providing the regular programming needed within our schools. We're also looking for some no-cost enhancements that should be noted. Biotechnology and environmental science will be college-level classes offered at Chippewa that directly support our agroscience program. We are building our agroscience program not only to just prepare our students for career success, but also college readiness. The last bullet up there is the zero period. And I want to explain to you what this is. Chippewa is creating a new opportunity for students who would like to open up scheduling options by creating a zero period. This is a creative solution to start school earlier for students who choose to expand their scheduling options. What this will allow students to do next year is to take a personal fitness class as early as 7:00 a.m. as a pilot. Many schools have used this option for band, music, and the arts to make sure that students have a well-rounded education without feeling limited by the constraints of a traditional school day. We recognize that the requirements for our students continue to grow, and I think we need to figure out some ways that students who want to make certain they can take advantage of all aspects of education have that ability by extending the school day option. So, in addition to some no-cost options for enhancements, we also were seeking cost savings from changes. Efficiency has been a regular reference for our administrative team this year. We want to be resourceful and find opportunities within our school system. Our technology department recognizes the speed in which technology is changing. By shifting to a leasing option, we will stabilize our costs year after year while also providing current and reliable devices to our staff and students. We also would like to introduce a print shop at Chippewa. By doing this, our students will be able to learn through graphic designs and offering some printing opportunities for our own publications. Additionally, we have a bulk ordering opportunity. Nicole has created a system in which bulk ordering and establishing common supplies within our schools will create price savings as we then find price-cost reductions by buying in large quantities. Large quantities being in quotes. Additionally, our system change in our budgeting practices will allow our schools to have more line item control that will result in more fidelity to our budget planning. We want to make certain that we've given the ability to make those decisions at the people who are implementing at the school level. So, to bring us back, and oh my goodness, did that slide do some shifts on me. So, to bring it back to what we have, we are looking to increase our budget $172,490 over this year's budget. This results in a 0.76% increase over our current spending. So, I want to highlight some of the changes within these categories. As we did last year, we are able to showcase what we are currently spending, what the change is going to be, and the percent change as well as the dollar amounts behind it. Our personnel and salaries change does need to be explained as there are more factors than just the contractual changes causing the increase in this line item. During the review of line item transfers, the business office found that holidays and vacation days were never calculated in this line. We've adjusted to correct this error. This does not increase the overall bottom line, however, it does cause an increase to this line item. Additionally, we found that some of the contractual negotiations happened after our budget was passed. Therefore, correcting that and planning for the future, we look to see that we have budgeted accordingly. Nicole has successfully negotiated favorable benefit rates to our district. We continue to watch the state healthcare plan to see if it is advantageous for Region 12 to join the healthcare partnership with the state. This year, districts participating in the state healthcare plan saw increases. We continue to monitor this plan to see if there's a reason to move to this plan for either better rates or service options to our members. Thus far, we are in a better place with our current plan. Other significant changes include the reduction of our property and programs line item. This reduction is due to the upcoming repair referendum request. So, we recognize that we are going to have some big projects if the $4.5 million referendum is passed, which means that we are not also looking to have other capital projects in the works as well. So, it's important we pulled out that line item. It is also important that we plan for what we can accomplish. The referendum projects allow for us to do long-term fixes on facilities issues. If you look at the eight and 900 dues, fees, and debts line item, this increase accounts for the bond payments for the building projects. The increase is due to the permanent bond financing being fully amortized. So, as you can see on this slide, there are major drivers in our budget increase. I'd like to call your attention to the fact that our major drivers alone would increase next year's budget by $745,169, and yet, we are only asking for $172,490. This means that over a half-million dollars was accounted for by efficient practices and being resourceful with what we have. One of our drivers is personnel. We've adjusted staffing to absorb some of this increase in cost and the growing need for staffing with our new agroscience program. We will share the details with each one of these driving costs and their impact on next year's budget through our next couple of slides. So, let's look at factor one, employee payroll increase. This year, our building project is near completion. We have added approximately 50,000 square feet of instructional space to Chippewa. We need to add additional custodial services to support that addition. We are seeking a .4 custodian to help maintain and clean our agroscience areas. As part of the agroscience program, this year, we hired a farm manager with some of the hiring savings we found. I recognize that we were trying to develop the Chippewa farm and the Chippewa agroscience program concurrently and with mixed results. The addition of the farm manager allows us to build the Chippewa farm that our agroscience students can learn from until we are able to build the agroscience program to its full capacity. Once the farm is fully functional, the farm manager's responsibilities will be turned over to our agroscience program for the agroscience staff and students to maintain. Therefore, this position is a temporary position. We attempted to shift position responsibilities for clerical support in the agroscience program this current year. We found that the shift is inadequate, and we need to expand the hire to support the program. We will now fill the agroscience teacher that this year we had hired at a 2.4. We will now hire next year to the full 3.0 that we had approved. The last change is for the booth-free multi-age transition. We will be reducing booth free from our seven FTEs to five certified teacher FTEs. However, with the shifts that will occur throughout the district, this will actually translate to a 1.5 certified teacher reduction when taken in consideration across the district. This reduction will occur through attrition. And at this time, I'm going to invite up Nicole to share the details regarding our debt service budget increase as it relates to current bonding as well as the impact of the agroscience program on our budget.
Thank you, Megan. Good evening. So, factor two, a major factor driving our budget, is our current debt service. Budget year 2020-2021 will be our first year carrying in the budget the full debt service on the bonds issued to cover the district's share of the construction project. In addition, we will need to renew the ban obtained to cover the 11% holdback by the state of Connecticut of the construction grant. As we've discussed in the past, once the state completes the audit of the project, we'll use the final grant distribution from the state to pay off the ban. The cost to renew the ban adds an additional $75,000 in debt service to the 2021 budget, bringing our total existing debt service to $666,000. This is an increase of $204,000 over last year's debt service costs. As we've demonstrated here, financing our construction project is a major factor in increased expenses. I'd like to look at the third major factor, agroscience. So, factor three, agroscience. The building project is about to be complete at Chippewa, and the third major factor in our budget are the costs related to our agroscience project as they're increasing our program. We're now in year two, so we have some actuals to go with our projections. We want to make sure that as our agroscience program grows, the financial story that we share about the program has continuity. We want the public to watch as our actuals from year to year provide us with the real costs that drive changes in our projections from year to year. Let's look at the actuals and updated projections for agroscience, agroscience by the numbers, if you will. You can see that the district will make progress on closing the gap between the revenue and expenditures of the program. Although the slide probably looks somewhat familiar to something you may have seen last year in our budget presentation, it's slightly different because we have shifted the orientation to vertical. We've done that in order to make it easier for you to compare this slide to the next slide, which is our agroscience business model. In this slide, the 19-20 year-one numbers have been updated to reflect actual staffing. Our 2021 numbers include, in year two, include the three full-time agroscience teachers previously contemplated for this year as well as the new positions Megan discussed of a part-time custodian, secretary, and farm manager. After a year of operating, we've increased our projected program costs by more than $100,000. This increase is to budget more realistic expense numbers now that we have actual numbers to work with. The majority of this increase is based on feed and care for our animals and facility-operating costs, but also the expected costs next year that will increase due to our addition of the second cohort of students. The agroscience program is 4.86% of our total budget request. This is up 1.2% over year one. In year three, we will look to add a fourth and final full-time teacher. But other than that staffing addition, we expect to see some stabilization of the program costs. And of course, debt service will remain constant, and in fact, it will reduce once the state has released the holdback and we can pay off the existing ban. We've updated the five-year agroscience model with year-one actual numbers. Based on those numbers and our projected year-two enrollment numbers, based on actual applications received to date, we've made minor adjustments to enrollment throughout the five-year period. Combining this updated model with the previous slide, you can see that we maintain that the program will reach breakeven in year four. It's extremely gratifying to those of us who've worked hard on this project and also on these business models to know that even though some of the costs are unpredictable and significant changes have occurred, our target breakeven year remains the same. As our revenue numbers continue to grow and after deliberation with our Finance and Operations Committee, we believe it's in the best interest of the program to retain state grant payments in the district. As such, starting with the 21-22 budget year and future budgets, agroscience operating expenses will be netted from the budget request to the town in an amount equal to the anticipated state revenue. I'm going to turn this back over to Megan now to talk about our operational costs.
That is ugly. Please, if you could just look at your slide as well because right now that has messed up the numbers. But my hope is that if you have a copy, please look at the referendum, repairs referendum that we are seeking. As we grow our programs, we also need to fix and maintain our four schools. Our facilities director, Donna Larry, has been working with our Finance and Operations Committee to create a five-years facility plant to not only repair, but also to keep up with the care of our buildings. Our roof at Chippewa is in desperate need of repairs. If we are not able to refurbish the roof this year at the $1.7 million cost, we would need to replace the roof at Chippewa proper, which would result in an $8 million cost. As we consider repairing Chippewa's roof, we also recognize that Burnham's roof is experiencing problems with its slate tiles' structural integrity. They are falling. Our repair to Burnham would not be a slate roof, but rather a comparable roof to the other schools. The repairs that we are seeking that you see before you, including roofs, boilers, elevator repair, perimeter heating, windows at Chippewa, siding for Booth Free, a new sign at Booth Free School, a maintenance garage for the district, HVAC rooftops, and a 10,000-gallon water tank at Chippewa are not about enhancements, but rather meeting basic needs of our schools. These repair costs have been evaluated against our financial forecast, and Nicole is going to share with you the short-term strategy and the long-term cost as we ask to go forward with this repair referendum request.
So, because of the urgency of the repairs that the superintendent is seeking, we would like to begin work this summer. In order to accomplish this, the superintendent's budget proposes that we seek immediate short-term financing in the form of a bond anticipation note, the closing of which would allow for a summer construction schedule. The total debt service and issuance costs on the $4.5 million ban are projected to be $75,000 and are included in the superintendent's budget request. However, we feel it's important that we discuss the cost of the debt service on permanent bond financing, which we estimate to be in the amount of $500,000 per year. The estimate is based on a rate of 2.5% with a 10-year amortization period. This estimate is high with respect to rate because rates are currently trending much more favorably, especially in the municipal bond market. But the predictability of the market as we go over the next 10 months could change, so we wanted to give a high estimate rather than a low estimate. When it comes time to seek the permanent financing, the Finance and Operations Committee can look at current rates and associated interest costs over different repayment periods to come to a decision as to what that repayment period will look like and what the debt service on an annual basis would be in years forward. In the meantime, by moving forward with the proposed ban, we're able to control debt service in this current budget request. But we also want to make sure that we are transparent with our taxpayers and our towns that the permanent debt service costs for future budget years will be significantly higher. So, all of these numbers that we've just covered are in support of the superintendent's 2020-2021 budget request to our towns. I'd like to ask Megan to come back up to share the town distribution.
So, I have used the $22,980,890 request to share each town's membership percentage and the cost to each one of our towns. This chart captures the projected costs and the anticipated revenues that will be credited to each town over the year. So, as you can see, we have the percentage membership based on this year's enrollment against the $22,980,890. That's where we get the town's overall contribution and then what we're anticipating for our revenue through tuition. and then what we're anticipating for our revenue through tuition-in and what that would be credited over the course of the year. So tonight, I speak on behalf of our administration, our staff, and our students as I thank our communities of Bridgewater, Roxbury, and Washington for the support you give our schools. We provide a world-class education for our students. We want to reflect and promote the communities that we serve, and we do believe those are world-class. Our educational efforts build our communities, improve home sales, and strengthen our towns. Your support allows us to do so. So we thank you tonight, Board of Education, members of the audience, for your time and consideration for the budget request to support our schools by increasing next year's budget by 0.76%, resulting in our ask for $22,980,890 for the 2020-2021 school year. We have provided to each of our board members, as well as any members of the public, the superintendent's budget that does include our appendix to show Exhibit A. That has also been broken out to Exhibit A, which is our typical school operating budget. But also, in response to the requests from some of our board members, we also have Exhibit B, which highlights the cost of our agro-science program. We ask that you review this. We will come back together in order to ask questions as you digest the information that you have before us. Thank you for allowing us the time.
Thank you. At this point, I think we'll, we have no objection. We'll adjourn this special meeting and then reopen our regular meeting. So it is adjourned at 7:09. And now I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Board of Education. And we'll start out with a call. Yeah, somebody's calling me, unfortunately. I can't make it turn off. There we go. I'll start with the attendance. Joe, John, I'm here, Jim, Alex, Justin, Jen, Mike, Julie, Pete, and Mary. All right, so we we have 11. All right, at this point, we're going to keep our meeting open, but we're going to decamp for a tour of the facilities. So let's go. Well, but before we start, do we has, I don't know how much of this facility, I've lost, I've done so many tours, I've lost track of how much of it you've seen. Do we want to start down at the greenhouses and work our way across this, this building and then move over to Building F? Does that work for everyone? All right, let's, let's do that. Public comment. Does the press have anything for us? No? Okay, well, we'll move on to the consent agenda. You might note that the minutes of the board meeting of February 10, 2020 are on there, as well as the National Iron Bank Resolutions 1 through 7 for my signature. If no one objects, I will sign those tonight. So if you, if anyone wants to take anything off the consent agenda, I will entertain that request. Hearing none. Those items are approved. The board chairman's report is going to consist just of mentioning that, for those of you that haven't already figured this out or don't know about it, the, there's a championship game ongoing tonight. It's a semifinal. Right now, it's Chapag and Nanawog. Womogo, I'm sorry. Chapag and Womogo, excuse me. Right, that's right, they were there earlier. And I understand Chapag is winning. So that's all the chairman has for his report. I'll turn it over to superintendent.
Okay. Well, as, as you know, there is a lot of news right now about the coronavirus. We did send home a letter to all of our families on Friday because we wanted to share some of the non-pharmaceutical prevention measures that we are taking. All of our school nurses have been into classrooms to instruct prevention techniques such as handwashing, how to properly sneeze, the distance, making certain, we're opening the doors with our elbows. So things that we're doing are more precautionary, but it is one that I do want people to know that we are continuing to watch for the developments within, that are happening around our surrounding towns. I have to thank Juliana Fontanella, who joined me at the New Milford Board of Education meeting on Tuesday night. We continue to attend our sending board, our sending towns' board meetings because we want to make certain that we thank them personally for believing in Chapag. Additionally, I do want to share with the board that there was an issue with the survey distribution to parents. Rather than sending out the 28-question survey, the longer version was sent out through Panorama. So the good news is that we are able to extract the information from the longer form. However, we are slightly embarrassed by the error, and we appreciate the perseverance of our families. We do have a survey that's going out to the staff later this month and students after the smarter balance testing has already been completed. But please know, all of the questions that were administered are going to give us the information we need in order to develop planning, in order to figure out how we best serve our communities. So the efforts are not in vain. I do also want to share the Valentine's Day dance that our elementary schools had put together by our PTO's collaboration is always an exciting way to get our students to mix before they become students together at Chapag. We also have to, again, send out another apology because there was a lack of parking available due to the multiple events that were happening at Chapag that evening. We have since taken corrective action to make certain that parking is factored in all facilities requests. So even events like tonight, you see how crowded the parking is. And so we're going to try, make it certain that when people are giving us a facilities request, we're not just considering the spaces within the building, we are considering how much parking is needed. I would like to publicly congratulate our junior Owen Hibbert, who scored his 1,000, 1,000, I'm going to try this. He scored 1,000 points already in his high school basketball career. He continues to post points beyond this amazing milestone, and we look forward to the records that he's setting. And I'm pretty certain he's continuing to set those records tonight. And as Greg said, we are wishing our Spartans good luck on the basketball court today as they take on Womogo. So just a quick update with our personnel. We have an appointment for Sarah Baldwin. She will be the literacy tutor at Washington Primary School. This position is a one-year position and will conclude at the end of this school year. And that concludes my superintendent's update.
Okay, Treasurers' report. John.
Yes, I haven't seen the February monthly on the budget, on this, this year's budget yet. So I'll give you an update at the next meeting. And other than that, a lot was said about the budget. I'm definitely in favor of, you know, doing the ban for a year and sort of like paying for things as they're, you know, finished and then going for the entire bond when everything is completed. So, other than that.
Thank you. Committee reports. Mary, anything from Cabe?
Well, the one thing I did do was I waited 14 and a half hours at the Legislative Building to speak on behalf in support of the, taking away the religious exemption for immunizations. I got asked a lot of questions. But I'm proud to say that it did pass. So it's going out of committee, it's going out of public relations. And I, I'm not sure if they're going to vote by the whole legislature or if it goes to another committee. But that's where it stands right now. There were a lot of people there, and 14 and a half hours is a long time. But I sat in the front row and listened for about 95% of that. So it was interesting. And there are going to be some problems if they, when it passes. Some of the things that will, will, we, it may be turned over to us to deal with, but we'll see what happens if they have answers for us. It has mostly to do with special education and what's required for us to, this, the services we have to provide to special ed children. And if they are exempted and they don't, they, or they decided not to go, even though they're supposed to, then we'll still have to provide services for them, and that is a little bit of a snafu. So we'll see what happens with that. But so far, it has passed out of the public health, and it's moving along.
Thank you.
I also made sure that I, I mentioned to them that I represented myself and not the Region 12 Board of Education because I didn't know if they knew that that was true or not, but I just wanted to make sure that they knew that.
Okay, thank you. Mike, curriculum?
Yeah, our committee just had a very productive meeting, I thought. We, we started with a report from, by Mike Boucher to talk about social-emotional learning in the district. And very impressive list of different activities from programmatic activities such as a half-year of health in sixth grade, I believe, focusing on social-emotional learning, to advisory activities at the middle school and high school, some special assemblies that they have planned, such as Sandy Hook Promise, SAVE, the Hockley-Wingman Program. So a number of different ideas that are on, not only ongoing, but projected ideas for the future too that they're looking at. There is a survey that we heard about earlier in the year, if you remember, on substance abuse, suicide prevention. That survey data should be really useful to the district in terms of looking at baseline data for how our kids are doing in terms of mental health and any other, you know, potential programmatic changes that we would be thinking about. We had an update on Booth Free School, and I think there are two different meetings in March. I don't know if, Megan, if you talked about that in your report. But there's one on March 12th and March 16th, I believe. And so if anybody wants, hasn't, not had a chance to go to Booth Free to talk with parents about it, I'm assuming board members are always welcome to go to those meetings too. And then we also had a meeting that focused specifically on technology and Power School. And this was news for me that we have a higher Jennifer Borrega, who is working with central office and other school staff in terms of training them on the many, many uses of Power School. And it sounds like there are a lot of other abilities for Power School that are going to be rolling out, such as a recent add-on that would allow for school forms, registration, emergency contact information. All of that could be done through Power School as well.
Okay. Finance and Operations, Alex.
Yes, since our last board meeting, we've only had one meeting of the FNO committee, and that was a special meeting on the 26th of February to review the budget. Just so that those of you who got the, well, all of you got the 30-minute presentation today, I just want you to know, our meeting lasted a lot longer than that. I think it was about three hours. But anyway, I too am supporting the budget. And basically, that's really the report, is that we went over the budget and dug down.
Thank you, Alex. Jim, Labor?
Yeah, excuse me, I was informed by the superintendent today that we have heard from the Nurses Union, and we have scheduled, I believe, an initial meeting on March 14. Is that right? I'm not sure about the date, but it's coming up. I, I don't have the date in front of me. We've got a first date scheduled, so we'll be starting.
Yeah, March 14th is a Saturday, so.
I'm sorry, it's a Thursday. The 19th, I apologize. So we'll be starting negotiations with the Nurses Union at that time. Nothing else.
Okay. Julie, Strategic Long Range Planning?
Yeah, we haven't had a new meeting since our last update, but Megan will be asking for some money tonight, I believe, for our marketing firm that we've chosen. So I'll let her talk about that.
Okay. Well, let's move on to New Business, Multi Age update.
Within your board packet this week, you'll see I've shared with you the Booth Free presentations that we've given to parents. The second presentation was more of a multi-session question and answer, so that's why there's not a presentation specific to that information. I did want to also share that on Wednesday, we had the fourth of the six community conversations. This one was a very important meeting because it was about scheduling. And this was the ability to showcase the extent of the planning time that we'd be giving to classroom teachers. We wanted parents to see what happens within that timeframe of the day, how many teachers are in the classroom. And I know that management and those concerns really do arise with the parents when they hear going from eight students to 20 students in a classroom. But we're able to show that there's always at least two adults in that classroom at all times, if not more. And all of that is to, you know, have concentrated support, create more grouping activities. So after we were able to showcase the actual schedule of the day, we then had our parents break into sessions and with some data on our students for fourth and fifth graders, create their own grouping sessions and explain why they would have grouped students the way that they did. We had different colors depending on the grade levels. And what you were able to see was, we were able to mix the, the fourth and fifth graders when you're looking at what is their actual ability level for reading. And so seeing some of those dynamic opportunities, even when you're just looking at grade level factors and skills within those grade levels. So I do want to also acknowledge, I know the board, we received a petition from one of the Booth Free family members. I have analyzed the petition signatures to find out how many are families within Booth Free to see the impact of the petition request. I will be crafting a response letter, and I will share with the board. But at this point, I've already reached out to the parent as well directly. So that is something that we want to make certain that we are responsive to as well as making certain that. I know when we looked at our configuration, we talked about what configuration of Multi Age was most appropriate. We did not ask the question whether or not they wanted to go to Multi Age. So to know that we're moving forward with an initiative that I've put forth is important for us to, to recognize, to recognize that there's a lot of support that's going to be needed because I think this is truly a model where we have the Burnham model, which has been incredibly successful. We know the path to success, but we also know that there's a trust factor that needs to happen as we're developing these relationships to make families feel that the change is going to be appropriate for their children. So I want to answer any questions about Multi Age.
I just had a question. I was curious to read some of the comments that the people who signed the petition wrote. And one of them said that the Burnham test scores were skewed because we had so many New Milford students. And I was, I don't know if there's a way, I'm sure you can analyze that, but, but are our scores at Burnham better because of the New Milford kids?
So I'm going to tell you, what I did do in the second presentation is I took the scores, Burnham, Booth, and our district scores to showcase how that pans out. But then what I also showed is how the students score when they get to Chapag as a Washington Primary student, as a Burnham student, as a Booth Free student, and as a tuition-in student. So we did disaggregate the data in order to really isolate how the students were performing within each category. And this is where And this is where to say to you, I don't think we have enough data points to say with certainty it's multi-age that, that makes a difference. However, what we can certainly say is that in multi-age, we are able to teach the standards and make certain those grade level expectations are met even in the multi-age model.
But I guess what I'm asking, is there something to the fact that, let's say, the families coming in from New Milford are maybe people who, you know, are at a level that have, are bringing up the Burnham scores. That's what, is there a way to know that?
Yes, actually, I was, I was at that presentation. And at the elementary level, the grades at Burnham were disaggregated. You had Burnham students, you had Booth students and you had tuition-in students. They were separated. So you could see what the scores were from the native students, the students that live in the town versus the, the tuitioning in students. Had you combined the tuitioning in students in, it definitely would have raised the scores. But they were not combined in, so you could see where they were on that. And then you could see how that progressed into the high school and, and whether or not there was a, that pattern because the multi-ages were, were higher and that, whether that pattern continued into high school and it did. So there's, there's a sense that in some ways it got closer, but the point is, is that it was all disaggregated data. There was no way you could have confused multi-age students who were from, coming in on tuition basis because it was made clear.
That said, our tuition in students are doing extremely well on the testing.
Okay, thank you.
If, from your presentation, you mentioned that there's going to be a substitute teacher full-time at each of the three primary elementary schools.
Correct.
Will that teacher then be on call or just be there period every day?
Be there period every day, so-
So they may be one of the people in the classroom?
Absolutely, so if we have perfect attendance that day and that's somebody who could go and push in and support and provide additional-
So you'd have three teachers then?
You, you potentially could have three teachers.
Okay.
Additionally, we also recognize there is para educator support that exists within the schools. So there really is the opportunity to swarm, create the groupings, get children to have more attention in those groups that are specific to reading or mathematics.
Thank you.
Megan, I, in, in your response, and maybe you've thought of this already in terms of your draft of, of a response, or maybe you've included it in your presentation because I haven't gone to any of your Booth presentations, but as great as the results have been at Burnham, it's not that, that we can pride ourselves with having started this whole idea of multi-age, multi-grade. And in fact, when we, when Burnham was considering doing it, we looked at a lot of other data at a lot of other schools as models. And so while you might be, not be able to give them a lot of hard data as far as how it's been running in terms of Burnham, you have a lot of that hard data available to you. Is it Falls Village that has been doing it for many, many years?
We can, Cornwall has been. I can tell you Sherman is actually also looking at the model itself. Currently, we've had a number of schools who are actually looking at Burnham as one of the model schools. So to say that it really is a celebration of a well-created and executed multi-age model. I think the thing that's very nice is what we are able to control for in the variable when I showcase, this is Booth and this is Burnham, is that our students have the continuous and the constant of the same curriculum. And so knowing that they have the same curriculum and the same curricular expectations, what we start to control for is the variable being the model that's being used. And what we can showcase is, given the variable of the model being used, we do see some accelerated performance currently from our students who are being educated in Bridgewater. Again, we understand we're still in its infancy, but I do have to say again, the trending is very positive.
What is the plan for Washington Primary?
I'd like to take care of Roxbury first. Um, no, I think this is where if we were to say that this is the right model, multi-age is the way we need to do all of our elementary schools, well, at that point, Washington would need additional staffing. So it would take more than one of those classrooms in order to have multi-grade levels. So there would be an additional cost to create that model at Washington. That said, if this is an investment that we find actually creates better opportunities for our students, we should look at that investment. But I think right now, we were able to have our attention on Burnham for a couple of years to make certain that model is successful. I'd like to give that attention to Roxbury as well and make certain that we've got a successful model. So the gradual introduction is important.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to social emotional learning.
Well, this was, Mike actually gave us a perfect segue to talk about the social emotional learning that happens in the district. And actually, when Mike first brought the idea to our attention to say we need to talk about this at the Curriculum and Educational Planning Committee, it's the realization that there's a lot of things that we are typically doing quietly and without any fanfare that I'd like to highlight that are happening within the schools to the board's attention. We offer a number of programs. We are, it is important to us, we individualize the support for the students. It's one where we want to make certain, we don't have a lot of students, so we don't want kids falling between, through the cracks. And I think as we realize, when we look at some of the tragedies that have occurred, it's sometimes social isolation, it's feeling a lack of belonging. And a connected student is a better student. And so programs that we do have, the Wingman Program, this program is from Dylan's Wings of Change. Dylan Hockley was killed during the tragedy at Sandy Hook. His father, Ian Hockley, is promoting this mission of the program, which is to install the universal values of compassion, empathy and inclusion in our children. Ian actually came here to Chapag to speak on Wednesday to our students. And I can tell you the, the absolute, just respect of what he had to say, it, it really, you watch students just in that moment of reliving that this is something that happened and the life-changing moment and what are some of the things we can do in order to prevent through creating inclusivity. And so he did a beautiful job and it is one that our guidance office is championing. We also have a Start With Hello. This also comes from the Sandy Hook Promise Foundation. This initiative is a way to unify our students and to reduce social isolation. So there's three steps within this. If you see someone alone, you need to recognize the signs of loneliness, reach out and help. So how you can make people feel included and Start With Hello. How do you break the ice and start up that conversation? And things that even at our elementary schools, they're trying to create inclusive lunchroom tables. Mike Boucher has created a time in which he's trying to encourage staff to sit in the lunchroom and have lunch with the students. I don't know if you've noticed the lunchroom at Chapag, but now that there's the, we, there's the, which tables do they have? What are we playing down there? Ping pong. We have ping pong that happens in our cafeteria and luckily we don't have any stray ping pong balls going into people's food, but also we'll have a couple of beanbag toss games. But it is the idea of how do we connect? And sometimes when you can't connect through conversation, you can connect through game. And you will often find our staff members down there playing with the students. Additionally, at our elementary schools, down at Washington Primary, they make it an effort to mix the students. So we have our older students with the younger students on a couple of days a year in which we have the grade levels eating together and the students are then encouraged to have recess time together. So again, creating that community of learners. Additionally, we have Second Steps, which is a social emotional curriculum supported at our elementary school levels. This teaches students how to read social cues, what do facial expressions mean, knowing that eighty percent of communication is not what is said, but how it's presented. We also have within that coping strategies, support strategies and bullying prevention that occurs at our elementary schools. We also provide small group supports with our guidance, social workers and psychologists. So we have small groups for students who may have parents going through a divorce, those who have issues controlling their anger, or those who right now need some social skills group where you practice how to lose a board game with dignity. So we create some of those contrived moments because it's important that, you know, you know, it may feel good to win, but if you gloat, nobody wants to play with you afterwards. We do have the Ben's Bells. This program is the Kindness Initiative. You'll find the murals that are found at three of our four schools. And just recently, Burnham has secured its funding to also have the mural at this school. So we are connected by kindness to those murals. Our guidance staff now does weekly quotes. Not only do they send it to the students, they tweet it out, they put it on social media. But these quotes are the initiative in order to give students strength and encouragement as they persevere through some moments. Again, all of these efforts that we do that are subtle, it's about creating that community. Sometimes it's not so overt, but I do want people to know we are constantly trying to take that culture, climate, temperature to see that we are responding correctly. So I'll take any questions anyone has about our social.
All right, now we'll go on to AgriScience and I'm going to hand it back to you. Enrollment update.
Currently, we have, we have our sixty-five applications that we have received for our second cohort of students. We have accepted forty-seven applicants. Thirty of these are from sending towns. Just to refer back to, for anyone who wants to look at our budget projections, we actually under-budgeted what our enrollment is. So we overshot our business model by two students. So the application breakdown, Sherman, we had two applications, so we accepted both of our Sherman students. Newtown, we had five applications, we accepted five. Newtown, we had fifteen applications, we accepted seven.
New Milford?
New Milford, sorry. Thank you. New Fearfield, we had one and we accepted that person as well. And Danbury, we had fourteen apply, we accepted nine of those applicants. Brookfield, we had seven, we accepted five. And Region Twelve, we had eighteen and we accepted seventeen. One will be given conditional acceptance, so they will be able to audit the classes to see if they can start meeting the qualifications that are needed for our AgriScience program. And that is the beauty of having the AgriScience here at Chapag, is that people have the chance to really explore and see if it's what they really want to do. We have one other, which is a student who is not from one of our sending towns, who the parents would like to pay tuition in order to send their child to our AgriScience program. And we have worked with the district that they would have typically gone for to make certain that there was no competition, that we weren't violating any of our agreements. And at this point, there is agreement to allow the student to be accepted into our program. So that breaks down the numbers that you see before you hear. Do you notice we will have forty-three eighth graders? We are able to absorb that number because seventeen of those students would have already been Chapag students. So it does not impact our number of algebra, it does not impact our number of English classes because that is their core. We were able to absorb that this year. We do not see any concerns for next year. We accepted two ninth graders, they will be new to the program, and two tenth graders that will be new to the program. So I wanted to make certain that you're looking, so the continuity across, so this year, these are accepted rates. So I wanted people to see the change from Cohort One to Cohort Two. Down three in Sherman, up one in Newtown, down one in New Milford. We are at, at level for New Fearfield. We are up two for Danbury, we are up two for Brookfield. We are level for our own schools and level for others. And so combining our Cohort One and Cohort Two, we will have ninety-one AgriScience students at Chapag for next year. Any questions on our enrollment numbers? Okay, Greg, I'll turn it to you for your building update.
Well, you saw it. I don't have much to say. Nicole, you want to talk about the finance?
Sure. The Building Committee hasn't approved any payments since our last board meeting. One is scheduled to be approved at the next Building Committee meeting on Monday. And I think I mentioned the, with my last update that it was an even month, so we got to put in a request from the state. Even months are my favorite months. So I did request two payments, one on our AgriScience project of six million dollars and one on our Science Labs project of nine hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. And we're waiting for the state to approve and issue those payments.
We're going to move over to action items and the first action item is to consider, if appropriate, approve the board's hiring of Sandor Max for marketing support of Region Twelve schools. I've, we're distributing a proposal here, a, just to give you some idea of what the services are and what the cost will be.
So as you can see, this is an à la carte menu, so to say. If we were to do everything soup to nuts, it's approximately twenty-one thousand dollars. I don't think we need to do as many press releases as every month, but if nothing else, we can see what that would look like if that's something we're doing. So it is a question of, right now, we have talked to our, all three of our towns regarding the use of Sandor Max because as we bring people into the region, we are going to be talking about our school system, which can bring people into the housing market in each of our three towns. We want to make certain that each of our three towns is prepared with their own marketing plan. So this actually started with Washington's marketing movement and now is spreading with our other two towns. One of the things we want to be very cautious of is that our three towns are not in direct competition and that's where it becomes incredibly important that we're finding harmony in our marketing plan. And I think in our long-range planning, and Julie, if you want to speak more to it, so please note if I'm not saying anything, when we were considering the different marketing options, recognizing what would fit in to what's currently occurring versus what would be something that we would be causing something different to occur within the school district.
Can I ask a question? I sat through, I did not sit through Sandor Max's presentation. I, I did go to the meeting though where the prior group that was looked at. The prior group had a specific- The prior group had a specific program of trying to recruit people into the region. And this looks like a fairly typical public relations program. So is there, is there any sense of that, of that being something this group is gonna do? Are they gonna recruit or is it more subtle?
No, there is targeted marketing that will occur. Within their social media campaign, looking at where that is coming from. I know Sandor Max was more interested in pulling from the Newtown, the Danbury area. The other group we were looking at was looking to pull New Yorkers into this area. The other group was going to work with the Northwest COG and try to draw New Yorkers into all of the Litchfield Hills and then have each one of the towns showcase and promote why their town is unique. The difference here is Sandor Max would be specifically working with Region 12 and what makes our school specific and unique versus just drawing people into our area. That said, we do have the opportunity, if we wanted to include the other group and draw some of their catch base in, as we work specifically with Sandor Max, that's another opportunity that we can explore. At this point, we do have a marketing budget. It's coming into a contract with this because this is for the committee of the board. I would like to have the board's approval before moving forward with the, with this company. That said, we would remain within our budget. So the à la carte options would be specifically within our marketing budget that exists in this year's budget. No, I can tell you, no, 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 no. I can tell you what I'm absolutely prepared for. The branding, I think, is important. I think limited press releases and options. I would very much be in favor of doing social media. I think we have to recognize young families are coming from that venue and becoming interested in. And I do, I would like to see how, and how the newsletters could be improved with their work. That said, I'm very proud of our publications today. So if it's not something that they can show me is going to improve, then it's not a, it's not a necessity for us at this time. So I would reduce the amount that the press releases were occurring.
So I made a motion to approve the hiring of Sandor Max to be paid for within, as you, in your discretion or your committee's discretion, within the already-approved budget. Is that acceptable?
That feels very appropriate, yes.
So moved.
Is there a second? Moved and seconded. Further discussion. John?
Do you happen to have it? From this year's budget? Thank you.
See, I'm a nice guy. I didn't ask.
Very specific.
I don't know. I believe, I believe so.
Yes, we would only enter in for a year.
There's $9,000 in the current budget.
Except when you...
I could do all of the above.
Nope.
Yeah. If you did all of them, it's almost $25,000.
Nope, and that's right. We said branding and the newsletters, if you looked at, would total to $9,000. But I'm looking more at the branding, as I said, is my non-negotiable. And the social media would be my top priorities.
I mean, I recognize you've got a limited amount in this year's budget. But the trick is with these public relations programs is you really need to be prepared to go all in or don't do it. I mean, if we're not gonna do it right, if we're not gonna follow their advice, we may not achieve what our goal is, which I presume is to raise the profile of the district and bring in more people. And you may have trouble doing that if you don't do more, more than just one or two of these items. Just a thought. Okay, move, Mike.
Just a, just a second thought on that one. Before I became a teacher, I was in public relations for four years. And while I agree with your idea that being very specific in terms of your own goals is a good idea before you hire any external agency, I think the more specific you are in terms of what you really wanna achieve, the better. And the happier you'll probably be with them, too. But I also know agencies that they're gonna, they're gonna trot out as many different tools in their toolbox as they can. And I'm not saying that they're, they've padded this proposal. I'm just saying that I think à la carte is à la carte. And I think you can definitely pick and choose what will really be the most effective tools. I don't think you need every single idea that they, they've come up with. I, I think probably being a little bit more cautious as a board member, you know, our monies are precious. And I think that whenever we're going with an outside vendor, I'd rather be more cautious. So I'd rather have you start cautiously.
The motion was to spend the money in the, that was allocated in the budget, that's been budgeted. That wasn't in the motion.
Yeah, that's not necessary. Okay, is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Chairman votes aye, it's unanimous. Next action item, to consider, if appropriate, amend policy 1, 5141. Policy 5141, Student Health Services, to change the health assessment requirement from grade 10 to grade 9.
This is a request that was put forth by our nurses. It is not to change anything else with the policy other than right now, when they do their medical forms. Currently, ours are due in 10th grade, which is unusual. Other schools around us do 9th grade because that's when they're entering into high schools. So it's to have a corrective action where we require the health forms for 9th grade.
So moved. Moved, is there a second? Okay, moved and seconded. Now discussion, John?
I have no problem with moving it from 10th grade to 9th grade, except there is a problem, and Mary was alluding to it before, with the immunizations and vaccinations portion of this policy. If you scroll down, you'll see the exemptions. And one of them being the religious exemption. Now, if the state legislature, it depends on what they're, they're gonna decide with this exemption. And some other language could change because there could be grandfathered students. So I don't know how, will we bring this policy back once the legislature decides what they're gonna do with the immunizations?
This correction we're looking to do. We did decide to move to the Shipman Goodman policies for, after July 1. So at that point, the Shipman Goodman should reflect the immunization changes, if there are any, within the state statutes. This correction, we want our families to know going into next year that we're looking to have the 9th graders with their medical forms. So that's where the urgency to change came about. But you bring up a very good point that we should be watching for, John, so you are correct.
I mean, yeah, and another thing that came out of those hearings, I watched some of the hearings. I saw Mary testify. And in a school system, it's not only students, it's all of the other adult employees who are not up on their immunization. So maybe we should have Shipman and Goodman or whoever, the state, I don't know who, come up with some policy about vaccinating the employees and all the people that the students come in contact with. Because anybody that was born prior to 1986 can, if they didn't go through the regime of vaccinations and they haven't had their boosters, they can transmit these diseases readily. Why, why it's only limited to students, I don't know.
Actually, that was one of the questions I was asked about if I would, if I would want the staff to be also immunized. And I said, yes, because my idea is to create the safest environment for our, for everybody that's within our walls. And, but so far, nothing has come of that. The grandfathered portion is something that they, that has, that was accepted with the vote. That the, that all the children that have exemptions now in the school systems will, can go forward with the exemptions. But then the new people entering the school systems will not be able to have the religious exemption. That's the way that the, the law is going forward now. The other thing, Megan, I was, I was going to say is it makes all the sense in the world to change it to 9th grade since we have children coming in to the agri-science program. So everybody should be up to date at that point. And so it makes sense to move it to 9th grade.
That's a fantastic point that wasn't even brought up, so thank you.
Yeah, quick question, just a procedural thing. I, I didn't read the thing. Is it, what are you gonna do about current-year 9th graders? They're gonna be covered by this also, I assume?
They would have to. So this would be double the effort for next year. We would need our 9th and 10th graders for next year.
Okay.
It moves it to...
Yeah, just make sure that they didn't have a whole class that dropped through the cracks.
Jim?
Yeah, I just wanna address this religious exemption thing. Whether you're in favor of the religious exemption or not, the current state of the law in Connecticut is there is a religious exemption. So we couldn't eliminate three. We couldn't say that there is no religious exemption for incoming Chippewa students. That would be against state law. So that's my understanding as of today. So if we're gonna pass this today, I think number three has to stay in. If the law changes, I'd be happy to look at it to change our policy. But if they need this now to get on top of the 9th graders, that's fine. So I stick with my motion.
All right, it's moved and seconded. Further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Abstaining? Chairman votes aye, it's 10 to 1.
Nine to one.
Nine to one. That's right, we lost, Jim. Nine to one.
No, actually, eight to one.
Oh. No, no, we...
Okay, you're right, you're right.
Yeah, there are 10 of us now, not 11.
I'm sorry.
All right, the next item is to consider, if approved, if appropriate, authorize the superintendent to begin preparing the district to request taxpayer consent to issue bonds in an amount not to exceed $4,500,000 at a referendum to be scheduled.
The handout you're receiving is also projected on the screen before you, but this way you can take a look. We lost Don on our tour. So I'm gonna talk about the things that we have presented before you. And then I'm gonna have Nicole talk about the finance component there within. All right. For those who are on our Finance and Operations Committee, this is of no surprise. And I welcome your input as you have been through the conversation. But the conversation regarding the roof at Chippewa began last year and we did talk about it as a board. We recognize that right now we have some failures within our roof. We recognize that it is now at the end of its life cycle. And when they went and did the infrared scanning, and Greg, please feel free to jump in at any point with this. You wanna talk about that?
Yeah, let me talk about it. We, Don had the roof infrared scanned, it cost about $5,000 and it showed us all the areas where there was wet insulation. Wet insulation means a leak. And so those leaks were all repaired. But what we need to do is we need a new surface on the roof. The way a built-up roof works is you've got various components of it, starting with roof decking and insulation, and then there's asphalt and there's a variety of things. On the top is a pebbled surface. What we've discovered is, is that we can replace this roof. We could redo the surface of the roof. It cost us, I don't know, $3 or $4 million. If we were to put a new roof on the building, it would cost us somewhere between six and eight because we would have to increase the height of the parapet because now the modern code requires more insulation. However, this roofing company, Garland, has proposed to us that they refurbish the roof. And this involves putting a new surface on it. And it's only about a mil, well, $1,700,000 all in for the various things that have to be done, which is substantially less. It has a 15-year warranty as opposed to a $4 million roof that would have a 20-year warranty and then require us to do a full replacement at the end of that 20 years. So you'd be spending somewhere between $10 and $11 million over 20 years for that roof. Or we could do this $1,700,000 job now and then 15 years later, you could do another $1,700,000 job. 15 years after that, another $1,700,000 job. So it ultimately puts you on a slower trajectory for increase. This makes a lot of sense. And we think this is the way to go for the roof of the building. The Burnham roof is a little bit different. Burnham has a mansard roof on the building that's made of slate. And that roof is just about 90-something years old, which is about the useful life for a slate roof, 100 years at most. And that roof has gotta be replaced. Slates are falling off it, they're, they're breaking, it's a problem. It's gonna be replaced with a different type of roof. I think they've talked about a standing seam metal roof to replace that slate roof. I think there was a, sort of a, maybe a discussion with, with the folks in Bridgewater where we said, well, if you really want a slate roof, have at it. We'd be delighted to have you pay for it. Because that's been what the roof is on that building since it was constructed. But it just doesn't make economic sense. And everybody thought that standing seam metal looks pretty good. So I think that the consensus, we, we did approach them and let, you know, let them know this is what we're gonna do. And the consensus in Bridgewater is that we should, we should do the standing seam metal roof. So that's what that is. There's a boiler at Chippewa that needs replacement. That's pretty self-explanatory. The elevator repair at Burnham School, obviously you need elevators in these buildings in order to have, make them fully accessible. Perimeter heat at Chippewa, you saw examples of perimeter heat in two rooms, if you looked carefully. All of the new work around the outside of the building, there's a, there's a perimeter heating in the ceiling, it's radiant heat, it pushes the heat down. The purpose for that is to intercept the cold air coming in from the window and condition it so you're not depending on a, on a conditioning vent in the middle of the room to do the whole room. In the robotics room, you will see that there is a perimeter heating on the wall. It's the old baseboard type, not baseboard, it's half the wall up to the windows, type heating. And that is the type of heating we would probably be doing. That and maybe some of the radiant, but that, I'm not 100% sure of what they've put into that quote. But we do need perimeter heating, it needs to be replaced. We don't have adequate perimeter heating and it's causing our energy costs to be higher. Windows at Chippewa, the windows are gone. They are beyond repair. The company doesn't make them anymore. We can't buy replacement parts for them. The windows consist of a glass window on top of a panel below. The panel below is transite and it's gotta be carefully dealt with. But because it's all outside the building, it doesn't require environmental containment and it will be removed and replaced. These windows need to be done now before we don't have functioning, you know, windows on the building. It's been something that's been in our capital plan for... It's been something that's been in our capital plan for eons. There's some siding at Booth Free School that, that needs to be replaced, some clapboard siding on the front of the school. There's a new sign at Booth Free School that's self-explanatory. The maintenance garage for the district, we've discussed. We have vehicles that the district owns and uses to maintain its buildings. They need to be housed, they were housed formerly in the, the garage, that's now the reptile room and the, and small animal room, and as a result, we need something for these vehicles. You can't leave the vehicles outside, it, it takes down their, their lifespan. It also makes it difficult for the type of salt and sand material that has to be put down if it gets snowed on, and also you need to be able to have these inside for working on these vehicles and taking on and off the plows and whatnot. So we've come up with this maintenance garage facility. The cost originally started upwards of close to $1 million, and we have value engineered that puppy right down to $315,000. Pretty good price for, for what we need. The HVAC rooftop units at Chapag have to be replaced. They are old, they are ancient. Don has been keeping them together by taking and replacing individual parts inside of them for the longest time, and they're pretty much past their useful life and need to be replaced. That's an expensive item, but it's unfortunate, but it is what it is. The 10,000 gallon water tank is required for our wells because our wells produce a certain amount of water, but we use right now about 4,000 gallons a day here at Chapag, and we will be increasing when AgStem is fully implemented to something close to 7,000 gallons a day. And because of that, we need to be able to store water because the yield on our wells is not, these are not gushers that are producing so much water we can, we can deal with 7,000 gallons a day. If you overtax the well, or, or cause it to run dry, that could be a problem, so we have these tanks. The tank we have needs to be replaced. When we were looking at AgStem and looking at the possibility of watering the outdoor riding arena, we looked at the possibility of, for a $35,000 up-charge of putting a 20,000 gallon tank there, and it was decided that it would not be advantageous to water the outdoor arena, and so we're looking at a surface that does not require watering. And, and that's what we're doing. It's a surface that's impregnated with a wax polymer that allows it to not need watering. It's similar to the surface, but not as expensive as the one that's inside the riding arena we saw tonight. So those are the repair referendum items.
So the use of life on most of these have, has come to, to term, and so this is where the need is.
Mike?
Most of the, the items on the referendum totally make sense to me. I don't, I don't have any questions about them. This may be a minor question, but the new sign at Booth Free School is the old sign, like illegible, falling apart.
If you've ever seen it, it looks like a 12 font, small sign, so really, this is, again, everything that we're doing with Booth is revitalization, it's to, you know, signify that there's a school here, so we'd like to be able to give that the little bit of facelift that it deserves as we're doing this.
Then, can I suggest again, I've, I've asked a couple times, but I would love a new signage here at Chapag. We're spending millions and millions of dollars on this campus, and we've got a sign out there that's the original sign that is hideous. It's like, you know, buying a luxury car and then duct taping your license plate to the bumper, you know, I mean, it just makes no sense.
I told Nicole we're looking for that, too. So Nicole, do you want to talk about the financing and what's happening behind that with the chart that you shared?
Sure. So as I spoke about in the budget presentation, I think the best, I think the best way for us to finance this project, to begin it in a timely fashion, would be to get the temporary ban financing. We could close on that in approximately eight weeks, so we'd have the funding to start some of this work over the summer. The interest rates on bans are below 1 and 1/2% right now, so it's a great time to take one out. We have the money built into the budget to cover it for the year. It'll be trickier when it's time to go to permanent bond financing, once the project is done, which we'd look to do in about a year. We would have to start that process in about six months, because it does take about six months to issue municipal bonds, and that will be, you know, more debt service on future budgets, but it won't affect the budget that we're working on now for next year.
Nicole, in my understanding, is what you're proposing is not to take the bans out until after the referendum is approved.
Correct.
So we're waiting to see if the referendum's approved, and if it is approved by the voters, then rather than wait for the six months for municipal bonds, take out the bans, incur $75,000, but get that work done over the summer, rather than letting it drag on, because that roof really cannot go another year, it needs to be repaired now. So, yeah, that makes sense. Alex?
Yeah, I should have thought of this earlier, and maybe somebody can explain this to me a bit, about the perimeter heating. If we didn't do the perimeter heating, would there still be some cost incurred?
Well, if we don't put the, my understanding is, is we've got perimeter heating that is really not effective any longer in many parts of the building. All of the new AgStem parts of it have it. It's all in everywhere that we just rehabbed. Every one of those places has perimeter heating, but the rest of the building needs to have its perimeter heating updated. Some of it doesn't work well anymore, it needs to be replaced. If we don't do it, the problem you've got is you're going to have inconsistent temperatures in classrooms, they'll be cold in the winter, and the other, you know, as that heating slowly fails, they'll be cold in the winter, and then you'll be overtaxing the rest of the heating system. The idea is, is you want, you want to not waste heat, and by not having proper perimeter heating, areas of the building where it's just gotten old, this building's 50 years old, you're, you're spending more money heating the building.
Do we have any idea how much more money?
I, I don't know that a study.
What kind of savings we'll be getting?
I don't know, I don't know the study's been done for it, and I wish Don were here and he could explain this, but.
I'm just thinking, if we, if for some reason we were able to take that out, we could drop this down to a $4 million referendum, which may be what we'll have to do if we have to go back for a second referendum. I don't know.
Well, yeah, I, I, I would hesitate dropping any item out of this, because these were the items identified as the medium-term things that needed to be done, and that we really couldn't wait much longer for a lot of them. Okay.
I hope I'm not misspeaking, I don't want to speak on behalf of Don, but I believe that in one of our conversations, he shared with me that the time to do the perimeter heating was at the same time the windows were being done, because some of the same openings would already be open, so that if we do it now, it's less expensive than if we replace the windows and then go back and open those same walls.
Yeah, one of the good, one of the good things is that we've accomplished here is that over the course of doing the AgStem project, we've actually replaced the perimeter heating and the windows and the walls for the science end of the building. And so that, that actually has been a net gain, a net bonus for us, otherwise we would have had to do those areas, too, but because those areas had to be demolished and rebuilt, we were able to get that in as part of the AgStem project, but we have to do the rest of the building. Okay. Jim?
The Chapag roof, is it out of warranty? I mean, we, we did have a new roof put on.
Yes, it's 20 years old. Believe it or not, we did that 20 years ago. That, that roof, I believe, it's either 19 or 20 years old, but that, it's out of warranty, and the warranty isn't worth much at the end, because it, it's, what they're warranting is, if you're in year 19, they're, they're giving you a one-year value, and it's not much, it's a tiny fraction of the cost. So the warranties are not particularly efficacious at this point in time. Yeah, it's pretty much done. Thank you. All right. Further discussion. Do we have a motion to authorize the superintendent to begin preparing the district to request taxpayer consent to issue bonds in the, in an amount not to exceed $4,000, $4,500,000 at a referendum to be scheduled for these repairs? Mike?
Move. Is there a second? Moved and seconded. Further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? It's unanimous. Now, the one thing, I, I just saw passed around here, some kind of proposed dates. I just want to make it clear, we have not set this for a referendum, and I, and the reason for that is, is because we are not allowed to spend money in advocacy of it once we set it for a referendum, and so we have not set it for a referendum. This is just a proposed list of how a schedule would go, and that's really all it is. Just want to make that clear. Okay.
Important question. Jen, did we win? Oh, heartbreaking.
Heartbreaking.
What was so great, because we saw it was packed, and there were all these talented people offering, pounding, cheering, and it was just, it was huge. And then all of the hungry people were, they were cheering.
Thank you for the report on the game, and I'm sorry we missed it. All right. Is there a motion to go into executive session to discuss a public health concern? Second? All is in favor? Opposed? Abstaining? It's unanimous. We will go into executive session, preferably in.